Nothing but the best for our future. I'm thankful that not only for the difficult decisions that they make that are very public, but also for the myriad of decisions that they make on a daily basis that some might not even notice or be aware of. God, we just acknowledge that this is a really difficult season for anyone to lead in, and so we're especially grateful for the men and women here today that provide so much wisdom and guidance in the midst of our collective uncertainty. And so, God, as the council is faced with decisions of all kinds today, I pray for your hand on their leadership, their families, their health, and that their wisdom will truly be sourced from you. God, we place our decision-making ability, our trust, and our hope for the future in you, and it's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Shawn, thank you very much for being with us today and blessing us with those words.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
We have four proclamations that we're going to start our meeting with today, all of them important and impactful. So I will hand the microphone off to Councilwoman Elaine Hayes to talk about Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, income levels, and sexes, and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control or abuse. And whereas one in three women and one in four men have been victims of some form of physical violence by an intimate partner within their lifetime, and whereas in the United States, more than three women per day are murdered by their male intimate partners, including husbands, boyfriends, ex-partners, and dating partners. And whereas in Amarillo, Texas, in 2019, the number of emergency safe home days provided to adult and child victims totaled 4,916, and the number of family violence calls to the 24-hour hotline totaled 3,224. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, policing court costs, shelters and foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity, and whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime, now therefore, we, Mayor and City Council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all Amarillo citizens to speak out against domestic violence and support local efforts to assist victims of these crimes in finding the help and healing that they need. Given under our hands and seal of office this sixth day of October 2020, Mayor Ginger Nelson, Councilmembers Elaine Hayes, Frida Powell, Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith. Kathy Tortorio is with us today. Would you like to say a few words for us, Kathy?
Yes, thank you. The staff and the board of directors at Family Support Services would like to thank the City Council for proclaiming this on October, like you have done so many Octobers before. Amarillo, our fair city, is not immune to this scourge of domestic violence, just like so many other cities and states within our nation. So we will continue to work very hard to address that, educate people, and intervene with services for both victims and offenders. So thank you so much to the City Council.
Thank you, Kathy. We appreciate your work on this.
Yes, very much so.
At this time, then, we'll move to our next proclamation, which is National Chiropractic Health Month, and Councilmember Smith has that for us.
Thank you. I'm pleased to present this proclamation from the City Council. Let me read it here. Whereas chiropractors are physician-level healthcare providers who focus on the whole person as part of their hands-on, non-drug approach to pain management and health promotion, and who have special expertise in the prevention, treatment, rehabilitation, and musculoskeletal conditions and injuries. Whereas with many Americans working from home and attending school online since the beginning of the pandemic, the incidence of musculoskeletal conditions has grown due in part to an increase in sedentary lifestyle, poor posture, and stress. And whereas even before the pandemic, musculoskeletal conditions have been among the most commonly reported medical conditions for adults and seniors. Among them, low-back pain is the single leading cause of disability worldwide, preventing people from participating in daily and recreational activities. And whereas in addition to their expertise in spinal manipulation, chiropractors have broad diagnostic skills and are trained to recommend therapeutic and rehabilitative exercises to provide nutritional, dietary, and lifestyle advice. And whereas chiropractors recognize that physical activity can improve symptoms, decrease disability, and improve function and well-being in a range of chronic musculoskeletal conditions in addition to reducing stress and anxiety and enhancing sleep and quality of life. And whereas National Chiropractic Health Month 2020 serves as a reminder to all citizens of Amarillo that non-invasive, non-drug treatments for low-back pain and other musculoskeletal conditions such as spinal manipulation and other chiropractic services combined with an active, healthy lifestyle may lessen or eliminate the need for riskier, potentially addictive treatments such as prescription pain medications and surgery. Now therefore, we, Mayor and City Council members of the city of Amarillo, do hereby proclaim the month of October as National Chiropractic Health Month in Amarillo and officially joins with the American Chiropractic Association and the Texas Chiropractic Association in promoting the benefits of movement, good posture, healthy living, and a non-drug approach to pain management with its active and adaptive campaign. Given under our hands and seal of office this the sixth day of October, signed by Ginger Nelson, Mayor, Councilmembers Elaine Hayes, Frida Powell, Eddie Sauer, and myself. And I believe that Whitney, I didn't get the last name, is here to make a comment.
It's Whitney Ball.
Actually, I'm going to do that, actually. I was a little late getting on. I'm Dr. John Blackwell, and I'm going to accept on behalf of the Texas Chiropractic Association. I'm our District Two representative here from Amarillo, and just want to thank the city. As you all know, we've been able to be open this whole time, thankfully, as we were essential providers, and we're able to take care of our citizens during this crazy pandemic and keep people healthy. And it's our charge, it's always been our charge prior to COVID happening, and we are very honored to be able to serve our citizens here in Amarillo and to keep our citizens working, to keep our citizens healthy, to be able to work with our medical colleagues, to be able to help everyone to stay out of pain, to be healthy, and to live the life that they would love to live. And we really want to thank the city for recognizing this as National Chiropractic Health Month. Governor Abbott has done so at the state level, and so we're really excited about this proclamation. So we want to thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Blackwell. We appreciate your making time to be here with us today. Thanks for taking care of people in our city. Our next proclamation will be read by Councilmember Frida Powell, and it's on Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated, the United States from September 15 through October 15. The dates were chosen based on many Latin American countries gaining their independence during this time period, and whereas Hispanic Americans are the highest minority group in the United States today, and generations of Hispanic Americans have consistently helped make our country strong and prosperous. And whereas Hispanic Americans embody the best of our American values, including commitment to faith, family, and country, and whereas our community encourages and welcomes arts and cultural celebrations that are organized by the many ethnic and cultural groups whose work hard to promote and preserve their rich history and traditions. Now therefore, we, Mayor and Councilmembers of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2020, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourage everyone to join in this exciting and colorful celebration showcasing our Latin American community. Given under our hands and seal of office this sixth day of October 2020, the Honorable Mayor Ginger Nelson, Councilmembers Elaine Hayes, Frida Powell, Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith. And it is such an honor and a privilege to present this proclamation to Ruby Moreno, who is the Executive Director for the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Ruby Moreno. Thank you, Frida. Also joining us from the Emerald Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, we have Roland Romo, Michael Gonzalez, and Yolanda Castillo. And on behalf of the Emerald Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, we are honored and we're proud to serve our city and to accept this proclamation. It is important to our community to honor Hispanic Americans during Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15 through October 15, who deserve to be recognized for their contributions and accomplishments to our community. Amarillo has many individuals who are leaders and entrepreneurs which play a vital role in our city. Once again, thank you so much from the Emerald Hispanic Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry, Frida. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, we appreciate all that you do for our entire community.
Agreed, and it's good to see your board members and supporters on here with you, Michael, Yolanda, Roland. Thank you all for joining us today, but most importantly, thanks for what you all do to strengthen our Latino community and our city as a whole. Thanks, Ruby.
Right, and I miss you guys.
Our last proclamation today is on behalf of the Emerald Fire Department, and Councilmember Eddie Sauer will be reading that one.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And it's a real, I consider it a real honor to be able to read this proclamation for the Emerald Fire Department. Whereas on September 11, 2020, Governor Abbott deployed firefighters and support personnel from across Texas to help combat the devastating wildfires currently impacting the state of California. And whereas Governor Abbott stated Texas was ready to answer the call when disaster strikes, and so was the Emerald Fire Department. And whereas the Emerald Fire Department crew were busy laying hose across several miles up and down the mountains, helped with mop-up and worked 24-hour shifts, and whereas the Sierra Creek National Forest Fire is currently 44% contained, and crews will continue swapping out and working until it's 100% containment. And whereas the first five Texas Interest Rate Fire Mutual Aid System, the TIFMAS, crew members from the Emerald Fire Department arrived home safely last week. And whereas our firefighters are the guardians of life and property, and they are dedicated to the preservation of life and property, their helping hand to our fellow Americans in the time of need will not be forgotten. And whereas we stand strong behind the firefighters and first responders for a future that is safe and secure for all people. We call on all citizens to continue to pray for every person affected by this tragedy. We are Amarillo proud. Given under our hands and seal of office this sixth day of October 2020, the Honorable Ginger Nelson, City Councilmembers Elaine Hayes, Frida Powell, Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith. And here to receive this is our own Fire Chief, Jason Mays. And I just want to tell you, Chief Mays, how grateful we are for all that you guys do and the hard work that you do, and you guys do it so unassumingly and quietly, and I'm just really proud of you guys and what you all do for Amarillo. And it's just a real honor even to get to spend just a few minutes commending the work that you guys do.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dr. Sauer. As you mentioned, our members returned safely on the 30th, and this experience was just amazing. It allowed our firefighters a privilege of helping California's citizens and protect their lives and property. Our members were able to gain valuable experience in fighting very complex wildland fires, which will undoubtedly prove vital in protecting lives and property back here at home. Our members that we sent were Captain Josh Whitney, Captain Andy Mathem, Fire Driver Pepper Ramon, Firefighter Dory Mogulinski, and Firefighter Aaron Blasengame. And on behalf of the Emerald Fire Department, we want to thank our council, our city management, and our community for your unwavering prayers and support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate your leadership, and we appreciate the department's service to those in California as well as to all of the residents that live in our city. Okay, I think we are ready to move on to our agenda. We'll start with item 1A, which is a coronavirus update. Mr. City Manager? Oh, you're on mute, Jared.
I noticed that. As we're going to have Casey kick us off and give an overview, there are developments worth noting on the coronavirus front. She'll talk about those, and I think that's all we're going to have today. Won't really have any economic development updates or anything like that. So any questions Council has for Casey, fire them away, and we'll answer as best we can. Casey?
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to start a little different today. As we're getting close to Halloween, I thought we would talk about some of the information that our communications team has put together. So Stephanie has some pictures for you. We need our entire community to pull together as we're seeing an increase in cases, a decrease in hospital capacity. We'll talk about those numbers in just a minute. But with Halloween coming up, our communications team has launched an informational campaign called Celebrate Safely. This particular version will be Celebrate Safely Halloween photo. There's a photo component for social media. Like, you can see this one. So the CDC has put out recommendations for those activities that are considered lower risk versus higher-risk activities, such as traditional trick-or-treating, which is really sad. Trick-or-treating is a fun holiday. We certainly enjoy it at our house. And so we'll have pictures, tips, that depict the safer Halloween practices that you can participate in, really fun ways. We appreciate the families that participated in this event with us. So there'll be a video PSA. I think there's some other pictures as well. I think we had maybe three of them, and so they're really fun. The kids did a great job. This one's our number, our second picture, our second tip. So we'll also have a video PSA that will be KFDA, I'm sorry, KAMR Channel 4 put together for us that will go to all of the TV stations and social media, so we really appreciate them. The kiddos from Big Brothers and Big Sisters, they did a great job being our models and our Halloween decorator activity kids, and so we appreciate them. All of the recommendations and the tips you see are the lower-risk activities recommended on CDC's website. The Celebrate Safely campaign will continue throughout the holiday season. As we move through the holiday season, you'll see Celebrate Safely Thanksgiving and Celebrate Safely Christmas with those tips on how we can celebrate safely during this pandemic time. And so we certainly appreciate the kiddos at Big Brothers and Big Sisters and KAMR for producing that. I think communications did a great job, as they have done throughout this whole pandemic. Jordan and his team just are a dynamite team, so we couldn't have done it without them. I did mention the numbers, and so we'll talk about that now. As of today, we have a total of 9,595 cases of COVID-19 in our community. Potter County has 6,260 cases of COVID-19. Randall County, 3,335 cases. We have a total of 7,011 recoveries, and we do have 123 deaths reported in our community. So that leaves us with 2,461 active cases. Cases do represent a unique individual. The Panhandle RAC number, the regional hospitalization percentage that's calculated by the PRAC, is at 15.49%. And so today, and sorry, that number was calculated yesterday. The state releases that information every day at 4 o'clock. So yesterday was the first day that we were over the 15% threshold. So we'll certainly be monitoring that. The benchmark is seven consecutive days over 15%. So again, yesterday was the first day we were over 10%. Local hospitalization data includes 112 hospitalized patients for COVID-19, for a percentage of 4.55 total patients hospitalized out of our active cases. With that denominator so high, that's what puts us at 4.55%. Total adult bed utilization is at 83%. ICU utilization is at 88.5%, and ventilator utilization is at 34.5%. We do have at least two pediatric patients hospitalized and other school-related hospitalizations this week. The total number of cases in the hospital rose by 62% from last week on Tuesday, which is certainly significant. While ventilator use remains stable, the total adult bed and ICU utilization is concerning. Both of the hospitals report that type of phraseology. I certainly want, I want to review the criteria change from orange to red, just so that we have that information at the forefront of our minds. And so, level orange indicates a sustained plateau or limited transmission in active COVID-19 cases in the Amarillo area. Level red would indicate a sustained increase or widespread transmission in active COVID cases in Potter-Randall County or the Amarillo area. And so I just want to make sure that we bring that to the forefront of our mind, especially with hospital capacity increasing. You know, the thing that we all want is if someone, if our loved one gets sick, if we get sick, that there's a hospital bed available to us, and that is certainly something that we need to protect here in our community, hospital bed availability, our healthcare workers, our EMS workers. And so that is something that we will be looking at as we move forward throughout the week and the time to come. Again, just as a reminder, all of the prevention tips for COVID-19, wearing a mask, staying six feet apart. Stephanie, I sent a picture of a Swiss cheese model. I don't know if you have that, but I wanted to just point this out. This Swiss cheese model, I felt like this was important as we talked about the prevention efforts, wearing masks, staying six feet apart, hand washing, disinfecting. This Swiss cheese model indicates, you know, none of the measures, the prevention efforts by them are 100% perfect, just like a piece of Swiss cheese. But because the COVID virus, as you can see, coming through the holes in what looks like the pieces of Swiss cheese, the face covering being that first one, the social distancing, but every time there's another layer of cheese or another prevention effort, then those viruses or those germs are blocked. And so we don't do, we don't do those prevention efforts just by themselves. It takes all of them so that we have really good blocking of the virus. And so we want to use face coverings, we want to use the social distancing, the hand washing, the cleaning of surfaces. All of that together is what keeps us safe. And I think that this Swiss cheese model really kind of helps bring that model to the forefront of our minds whenever we can see that laid out in a picture. So I appreciate that, Stephanie. Though drive-through testing does remain open, patients can call 378-6300, and our call takers will direct them. And again, I just want to thank the staff, health, environmental health, all of the healthcare workers in the fight against COVID. And that's all I have today.
Council, do we have questions for Casey?
Yeah, Casey, would you remind me one more time, what is hospital capacity in Amarillo? Isn't it like 475 at BSA and 275 at High Plains, I mean at Northwest?
Yes, sir. It's 445 at BSA and 495 at, I'm sorry, and 495 at Northwest.
Okay, so whenever you come up, so I'm just thinking, our Amarillo, immediate Amarillo area, do they also count the beds that are available at the VA, or does that count?
The VA has, those numbers that I have reported don't include the VA numbers, but the VA has been reporting to us, and the VA, their adult bed utilization is at 44%.
Okay, well, okay, so this is the thing. So whenever the Health Department, I mean, whenever they're figuring our number downstate, do they, do they count the bed census at the VA in this, or is it just going to be the other hospitals in the area?
I don't know. That's a good question. I'll have to ask.
Okay. So basically, that means we've got about 900 beds. So in Potter-Randall ourselves, 112 divided by 940 is not quite that 15%. So there's other hospitals that are helping account for us being over the 15%?
Yes, so that would be that 25-county region, and so that would be the hospital in Dalhart, and the hospital in Pampa, and the hospital in Hereford. So those hospitals around the, in the state's calculation, that would be all of the hospitals in that 25-county region.
Yeah, so in other words, we've got some hospitals that have a pretty good number of cases in their hospitals, because our rate just in Amarillo would be 11.9 as opposed to the 15.49.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to make anything out of that. I'm just trying to kind of get a better grasp for what's going on.
And I think it's important for both, because, you know, if their patients become incredibly critical, then Amarillo is that referral path. And so if there's not any capacity in Amarillo, if we're at 88% ICU utilization, then the referral path for those critical patients in the region certainly is strained.
Okay, okay. Stephanie, could you send me that graphic? I think that's a great graphic, actually.
Yes, I will forward that to all of Council.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to add that especially as we see some of our numbers going up and the great reminder that Casey laid out and that visual on just acting responsibly and gave us some very specific tangible steps in doing that, just at the same time, just want to be updating again the numbers that I think that are helpful for us to keep in mind as well that came out from the 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 numbers that I think that are helpful for us to keep in mind as well that came out from the CDC last week. Just updating the survival rates per the CDC website on COVID-19. And because they had changed and for ages zero to 49, that there is actually a 99.98% survival rate, which is such encouraging news compared to some of the the projections that we were having to deal with in March when we were first dealing with this virus. And for ages 15 to 70, it was 99.5%. And then for 70 and over, it was 94.6%. So a lot of encouragement with the number of therapies that have been developed over the last seven months, even as we see numbers going up in cases of just still keeping these survival rates very high. And certainly for our families that have lost loved ones, those numbers are irrelevant. Their survival rate was zero. Their fatality rate was 100%. And so we certainly recognize that we are not all in the same boat in dealing with this. But I think seeing the the overall numbers are important as well. And one of the things, Mayor, we had talked about earlier with the the school starts and kind of waiting to get some numbers kind of after seeing several weeks of activity. And I wanted to follow up. There was a report that I had mentioned that had 17 major universities after a few weeks. And this was just updated yesterday, and there were 50 major universities. And there were over 70,000 reported cases from those 50 schools. Out of those 70,000, there were three hospitalizations and zero deaths. So again, very, very encouraging information for for those age groups. And I just I just want us as a community to be reminded, again, as Casey pointed out early, just the need to to be acting responsibly, to be protecting the vulnerable in our communities, but also not to be living our lives in fear. That when we think about just the health risk related to living in fear month after month also has some very detrimental mental, emotional, physical repercussions. And fear will always lead us to make irrational decisions and over overreactions. And just for us to be encouraged at a lot of the information of where we are today, seven months later than compared to where we began in March.
Casey, did you say that we had 62% increase in our hospitalizations from last Tuesday to this Tuesday?
Yes, ma'am. So we went from 69 to 112.
Okay, so I I think I really want to emphasize the message to our citizens is we need to live with responsible choices. And right now in our community, because our numbers are rising drastically, we need to be extra vigilant about the choices that we're making in response to the COVID virus. It is real. It is present in our community. And while we're not living in fear, we are living in respect, especially for our neighbors and friends around us. So responsible choices, Casey, can you run back through what the responsible choices would be and what we are currently asking citizens to be more vigilant about in order to get our numbers back in a plateau level status? What are those responsible choices?
So we we're in our community to wear a mask anytime they're outside of their home, to to be six feet away from others who don't live in their home, to if they're sick, to stay home, to wash their hands. So these aren't arduous requests. My grandmother talks about when she was a small child during World War II, that they planted victory gardens, that they had ration books for food, that they saved rubber and different things. And so I think that these requests are certainly minimal compared to the the things that we have, we have had to do in the past for one another. And so wearing a mask, staying six feet away from others, washing our hands in order to keep our hospital rates, our hospital capacity down, to protect those of us, you know, in our community that are are vulnerable. Everyone's vulnerable to COVID-19. And just to to slow the spread of the disease in our community is what we're asking people to do.
Casey, something that citizens are asking me is why are our numbers going up? They they want they want a silver bullet reason on why our numbers are going up inside the city. Can you speak to why you believe our numbers are going up?
We know that our community is weary. We know that people are tired. We know that these that these things are, that people are tired of doing these things long term. And so, you know, we see people gathering in large groups. We know that people, you know, it's it's hard to share. And those are things that we love to do as a as a as a, that's our that's our culture. And so we're not seeing specific hotspots like we did back in May, April and May. And so it's just generalized transmission. And so it's it's people gathering in groups, not wearing their masks, not staying six feet apart. And so it's it's just generalized transmission such as that. And so that's it's that's what it is. It's just generalized transmission.
So we're back to what it takes to make responsible choices to keep our community-wide numbers down. I mean, if I don't feel like wearing a mask that day, I would instead ask all of us as citizens, it's not so much what I feel like doing that day, but it's what you're choosing to do. And when we add all of that up times 200,000, that's the impact that it has on our citywide numbers, which equate to our hospital capacity for the the person who needs that hospital bed. We're making responsible choices to keep that bed open for them. Casey, I'm seeing people gathering outdoors at football games in stadium seating. Just talk to me about what we as the city would recommend to people who are going to those activities. They're outdoors, so right there, that's helpful. It's not an indoor activity. But how do you recommend or what are our, what's the CDC recommending about how we sit inside football seating?
So we still recommend that you wear a mask and we still recommend that you sit six feet apart.
Wait, it's outside, so why would you wear a mask?
Because so viruses don't know that you're outside. And so it does lower your risk. But if you're sitting, you know, six within six feet of someone and at a football game, I mean, you're yelling for your team or you're, you know, you're very sad that they, you know, they didn't make the play. And so you hug one another. I mean, you're still doing those things that, you know, that that are that put you at risk. And so if you have your masks on and you can, you know, sit six feet apart, like have family groups that are six feet apart, then that reduces, then that reduces the risk.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions for Casey or comments or concerns?
I did just want to follow up on on one statement on that we're all vulnerable. And just a reminder, we're we're not all equally vulnerable. There is a very difference in vulnerability with this virus that the statistics are showing us over seven months. And so we need to be particularly cautious with the elderly and with people who have underlying health conditions. And I think this is something that is common sense and certainly going forward. It, you know, we probably should have been doing this for years. I mean, it just makes sense that you don't go visit your grandparents when you have a cold or you have a flu and certainly not with this virus or any of the symptoms of it. And so, you know, the things on washing our hands that we could actually have been probably eliminating a lot of deaths in the past with with other viruses. So I think these are good habits, good things to be instituting and but a recognition that they're kind of with the same, the economic issues we talked about, we are in the same storm. We are not in the same boat and we are not in the same vulnerability boat and need to be more cognizant of those individuals with with the higher risk.
And I would just add on to that, that I do think it comes back to everyone's choices affect everyone around them. So when I'm at the grocery store, I don't know who those vulnerable people are unless they're openly aged or, you know, openly infirm. So it's about the choices that I make to encounter people who may be vulnerable. And sometimes people are vulnerable and they don't know it. You can have cancer and not know you have cancer. And so there, I think, while statistics show certain types of population are not as vulnerable, again, it's back to making a responsible choice because we don't always know who is vulnerable. So we're asking citizens to respect everyone, vulnerable and non-vulnerable, by making responsible choices and following the CDC guidelines and the governor's orders in order to keep our whole city safe.
So Casey, you talked earlier about level orange and level red. So currently, we're operating at level orange. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so and so are we are we close to level red? Or are we like right on the edge or where where are we at this point?
Well, I just, I wanted to bring it to our attention just because of the hospital capacity. And we're averaging, back in August, we were averaging around 70 cases a day. Now we're averaging around 118 cases a day or, you know, a little over 100 cases a day. So we certainly are seeing an increase in cases. And especially with the hospital capacity where it is. Again, if you are sick, you need to have a hospital bed. And so if if we can't assure our community that there's a hospital bed available, then we need to make sure that we're evaluating that very closely. And so we will internally have those discussions, but we just wanted to make sure and bring that up today so that so that everyone knew that we were talking about that.
And one other reason why we want to do that is as we start, if we trend through the rest of this week above 15% on our hospitalization rate, we're moving toward being a high area of high hospitalization, which changes our abilities to be open in certain segments of our economy. You know, it's not saying that we're going to change it, but it definitely means that we need to evaluate it just to make sure that we're all on the same page about what triggers would move us back into a condition red.
So at this point, what would what would trigger level red for us as a city?
I think we would have to have some extreme growth and and definitely be an area of high hospitalization. It's an articulation of our capacity and our posture that we need to take with our with our citizens and how they can help us. So I we have never had one trigger for moving to or out of condition red. It was really more of a subjective discussion with the Public Health Authority, Dr. Milton, our Public Health District, led by Casey Stotin, and and the input of of others that are on our Wednesday call. You know, because we are talking about hospital capacity and things like that. So we have to have a lot of input from our medical directors at both BSA and Northwest and then also input from our emergency management inside the city along with the environmental health. So it's a large group of people that has to discuss it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any other updates on the thousand that were reported from the prison system? Gassing is still too early to have recoveries off of that time period. So any any updates on that and if any of those numbers are impacting our current hospitalization rates?
As of last week, there were three inmates who were hospitalized at Northwest. I think we'll have an update tomorrow on the additional, like if there's additional information on hospitalizations. But we don't have a lot of information from the prison system.
So Casey, one question, we're talking about that. Does I I don't know very much about capacity out of the prison. Do they have capacity to hospitalize inmates out there? Or do are they always immediately transferred? I know that the medical and the dental side of it are with the contract of Texas Tech Health Sciences Center, but I didn't know whether they had their own infirmary that was able to handle this or do they automatically transfer those patients to Northwest Texas Hospital?
If they need hospital care, then they are transferred to Northwest. That they're able to care for a number of, you know, until they up until they need hospitalization, then they're able to care for them onsite. But then if they need hospitalization, when they need to be admitted, then they go to Northwest.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else, Council, then, on coronavirus? Okay, Jared, anything else?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am, that's it.
Thank you.
Can I make one statement real quick?
Sure.
It just kind of occurred to me. So I don't know if you've ever taken a stress test before. I think what we're dealing with kind of right now is like if you've ever taken a stress test. So you get on the treadmill and you start going. And just when you think it's about over, the stress test, the the oh, the whatever it is you're walking on, it raises and it goes to the next level. And we just, we're hitting that point. And it just means we've just got to get serious about it. We can survive this. We don't have to go down. It just means we got to be a little bit more vigilant about how we're dealing with people. And we got to think about other people first and making for sure that we're taking care of everybody around us. And that's the way that I kind of look at it is, okay, they've ratcheted up the treadmill and we we've got to survive through this part of it. And we can do that if we all just work together. And it's really pretty simplistic and it's an easy thing to do. And there's not a lot that's being required of us to be successful with this.
Thank you, Eddie. Okay, Casey, we appreciate you. Keep up the good work. We'll move on to item 1B, which is a report from the City Transit Department on our One Ride app. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am. The One Ride app, I've had an opportunity to test it out myself. It's very fascinating, very cool, allows you to see where your buses are at any given time during the day. Marita, take it away.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. All right, we are very delighted and we've gotten a very good response since our introduction of the One Ride app. I'll briefly go through this. The background on it is that Panhandle Regional Planning Commission received a grant from Tech Todd to develop an application to link regional and to to link people. And what RIDE stands for is Regional Transit Riders, to link regional transit providers with the service providers. And then they bid the contract, PRPC bid the contract, once they had the money. They were able to secure West Texas A&amp;M. And they were awarded the contract to develop an app. And we worked with the WT Web and Information Technology Department students who worked to develop this app for us. And then we had some difficulties in implementing because of some just difficulties in connecting the app with our technology that we already had on the buses. So we went out to bid, got new tech, new GPS units. And now we are, we are able to offer the service. And I I have to emphasize what a wonderful experience it has been with working with the partners that we had. Panhandle Regional Planning Commission, Katie Hall. And also we worked with James Webb and Dustin Yum of WT. And they were just wonderful to work with. And I also want to shout out to Brett Lawler, who was the person here at Amarillo City Transit who made it work. How to use this. You can go to the website, the Amarillo City website, amarillo.gov. And you can go to our page and it will, you will be able to download it straight from there. You can use Google or you can use the Apple Store. And it it will download to your phone. You can use Google or you can use the Apple Store and it, it will download to your phone. And I'll demonstrate that in just a second. The other way that you can use the app is to go to the One Ride website. And that is www.prpcc.wtamu.edu. And I'm going to go there right now. I'm really sorry. This worked before. I apologize for my
That's okay.
inability here. But if you go to the website, it, you can see the, the routes and you can toggle them, all the routes on, or you can go individually, click the routes. Oh, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew.
And you can see it in this satellite image, or you can go to, if, Andrew, if you could click the map. There you go. And you can see the bus is moving very slowly. And the way you use this is you, you, over to the, on the left-hand side, you see where the, the dot is beeping. I guess that's where Andrew is sitting at his desk. You can see those two routes above it and that they're in the downtown transfer center. They're waiting to depart. And if you click on the icons, you'll see the routes and you'll, you can see that Route 4142 moving. That's the route that serves the college, Amarillo City College. We have two routes that are on a 30-minute frequency there. So the, you click it, you can see the route, or you can go to, Andrew, if you could go to the, over to the, the West, the Westgate Shopping Mall. Thank you. And so you can click on individual routes, but you can also go to a destination. And if you click on those black dots, the circles, those are the stops that have time points. There are more stops on the route than, than those black dots, but those are the time points. And you can see all the routes that serve Westgate Mall. There's the 1143 and the 44 and the 4311 and then the 13. So you can use this any number of ways. And it will also, if you click on the specific route, it will show you the times that it arrives at those locations. If you, if you are unsure of your bus stop, you can always go to our website and we have a map that shows all the bus stops that we have. You can also call us to find a specific web bus stop. And that, our number is 806-378-6842. So you can see all the routes here on the left-hand side and you can toggle off the routes and then just look at just one particular route. So there you go. And then you can, you toggle them all off and you individually toggle, toggle them on. So if you want to see this pink route, which is the 4142 combination, which serves the Amarillo College, you can see that bus moving along the route. And the next time point coming inbound will be up by the college. And those are the two black dots up there and you'll see when those buses are coming next and you can go out and you wait for them. So we hope that this is a, a way for people who may not want to wait at the bus stop as long as, as some people do, and they can time their arrival to the stop with better accuracy. So that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll take those.
Questions, counsel? Marita, is there any cost to downloading the app?
No, there is no cost to download the app. The app is free, just like our service is operating free of charge right now.
What a great improvement to users.
We think so, yes. We've got really good feedback and very positive feedback.
That's great. Anything else then, counsel? Anything else, Marita?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Jared, we're ready to move on to the next item then?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We just really were excited about it. It's really novel. It's a great customer service tool. So we thought you'd be fascinated to see it as well. It's going to really help our riders be more efficient in their travels. So next up, we have reports from, I believe, Councilmember Hayes on the recent convention visitors group.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Well, the first meeting of the CBB was last week and everybody was in attendance. Six of us were able to attend in person. There were three that had to attend remotely for different reasons and hoping to get the next meeting actually all face-to-face. And, but some of the, just a lot of the housekeeping, beginning to get some things put in place. And one of the first things was the election of officers. And the, this year's president is Angela Knapp Egger. The vice president is Vik Raga. The treasurer is Phyllis Nicom. And the secretary will be the representative. From staff with the CBB is Mary Ramirez. So just, you know, I think everybody is really excited, very, very positive meeting, a lot of good feedback, some old faces, some new faces, that I think everybody around the table felt were, was just a really powerful board to be sitting down. The, the first, some of the first actions, again, were just housekeeping, getting leases signed for office space, things like that. But the agenda for the next meeting will be the first big step and that will be defining the policy for hiring of an executive director. And so, you know, some, some steps had been made along that way with the CBC. And so some of those things will be, I'm sure, part of the same policy going forward, but just a step back looking at what, what is the policy? How do we appoint and determine who is going to be on the search committee? How is the information posted to seek applicants? And the timeframe? And so those will all be defined at our next meeting. We actually have another one again during this month, not trying to, trying to get some things in order, not wait for just monthly meetings. And that will be the next priority item. But again, thank you to Brian McWilliams and also Floyd Hartman and the rest of the city staff that have just jumped in, invested multiple hours in launching this, this new organization here in the city. I, I think that everybody was just very excited for the new structure, the setting priorities, goals, working together and not just for today, but building a structure, building a, a roadmap that, that future boards can follow 10, 15, 20 years down the road.
Great. That's, that's exciting, but you're right, it represents a lot of work that went behind that. So we do appreciate the staff and Floyd and Brian and everyone who worked on it to get it to that point. And any questions from council for Councilmember Hayes about the CBB board?
Yes, Councilmember Hayes, where is the person going to office?
Still back in the, the city-owned, I call it the, the Chamber of Commerce building is where the Chamber of Commerce is housed. And so there will not be a change in location.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, we look forward to receiving continued updates from the new board and we appreciate the time that you spend with them, laying in your leadership on that board. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
Next up, Mr. City Manager, is a monthly budget update.
All right, we have Laura Storrs, Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer, to walk us through a brief budget update. We'll also have, right after that, Andrew Freeman, ready to step right in to do the sales tax update. All right.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. I'm going to share my screen real quick. We are going to do a short presentation on our August, end of August 2020 results from a budget versus actual perspective. What we are sharing here is, the top part is for our general fund. It is only the revenues and expenses related to the general fund operations. And please note that the top section there for general fund, it's listed in millions. So those are rounded numbers, but they are listed in millions. So the top part there, our revenue for the month ending August 2020, and again, that is 11 months of our fiscal year. The annual budget is 188.4 million, but the budget through the end of that month is 176.5 million. And we actually recognized revenues of $171.1 million. You can see that that is a negative variance of $5.4 million or about 3%. On the expense side, we have an annual budget of 188.2 million. The budget through the end of August is 172.3 million and we actually spent $157.1 million creating, and in this case, this is, it's a negative variance from budget, but it is a positive thing. So it's 15.2 million. End of August 2020 for general fund were $9.8 million under budget, or you could say that we were $9.8 million to the good. The next section here just outlines the major revenue sources for our general fund. We watch these very closely because they have a lot of, they've had a lot of impact through COVID-19. The first one is property tax. If you'll go to the second column with me, the budget through the end of the month was 42.87 million. We had actually collected over our total property tax budget for the year at 43.78 million, and that's a positive variance of about 909,000 or 2% over budget. And again, a reminder on that, that is only because we budgeted at a 98.5% collection rate, but you can see that our collections come in, in most years stronger than that 98.5% collection. The next line down is sales tax. Through the month ending of August of 2020, we had budgeted $55.5 million and we had collected $54.7 million. That was a negative variance of 723,000. So we were running about 1% below our budget as of the end of August 2020. Again, very encouraged by that number still considering the impact COVID has had on all of us. The next line down is our net hot. So this is our hotel occupancy tax collections, net of the rebate that is paid back to the downtown convention hotel. Through the month of August, we had 5.7 million budgeted and we had only received about just under 4.4 million. That's a negative variance of just under $1.4 million, which is about 24% below budget through the end of August. The next line down is our franchise fees. Our budget through the end of August was 16 point, almost 16.8 million. We had collected 15.5 million and that, this is also a negative variance of about $1.2 million. Again, the electricity franchise fee, which is driven highly by the low fuel factor, is the bulk of what's bringing those franchise fees in under budget through August. The next line down in general fund is related to solid waste and that is collections and disposal netted together. The budget was just over 20 million through the end of August. We had collected $20.7 million, which is a positive variance of about 662,000 or 3%. That is heavily driven by the revenues out at the landfill. The next section down is our utilities revenue. The first line is the combined water and sewer budget versus actual. Through the month of August, we had $72.4 million budgeted and we had collected just under $72.3 million. And you can see that that's almost right on target with budget through the end of August, just below budget by about $70,000. The next line down is our drainage revenues. Through the end of August, we had budgeted 5.2 million. Actual revenues came in just below 5.7 million. So that is a positive variance of $472,000 or about 9% over budget in that area. And then finally, the last part on this slide is our employee insurance costs. So our total medical claims budgeted through the end of August was 21.4 million. And you can see that our actual claims were coming in very favorable at $18.8 million. That's a positive variance of 2.6 million, or we had, we were 12% below our budget. Again, this is a very high-level recap of our results as of the end of August. Are there any specific questions that counsel has about any of this information?
Not seeing any, Laura.
Okay. Thank you for your time and we'll have year-end results before audit adjustments, ready the next go-around. We'll be finishing out the fiscal year. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for, for that report. Certainly the numbers could be worse. So we're grateful, grateful that they're not.
Yes, ma'am. Right, thank you, Laura. Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thanks.
Okay, so, Mr. City Manager, last item on the agenda is a sales tax update.
Yes, ma'am. Andrew, take it away.
Yes, sir. Pull that slide real quick. So in your City Manager's report, you've seen the more detailed presentations. So what I pulled for today is just some of the brief highlights for each category. First is our hotel performance. What we found for August was occupancy was down to 52.1%, which is compared to normally, it's in a 65 to 70% range. And then average daily rate was $72, which is actually performing pretty well from an average daily rate standpoint. Looking at the weekly numbers that the CBB shares with us, we're hoping to see September come in closer to the 60% occupancy range and still hovering around that $70, high $60 amount for the average daily rate. So they're still slowly heading in the right direction, as you can see, compared to the previous month, going back to when COVID really started impacting the hotel industry. Then the next category is our specific information related to the September sales tax. Retail continues the same thing we've been seeing the last few months with being up pretty strong, up 10.4%. Some of the higher performers in that category continues to be the non-store retailers, which was up again almost 140%. Miscellaneous stores was up 12%. We, of course, still, we still have some categories that are hurting a little bit. Clothing accessory stores, for example, is down 16%. General merchandise, which were some of your more big box type stores, which is one of our biggest contributors, is still down 2%. When looking at food, the overall category was down 3, but when we dive in a little bit more, we can see where the difference is when it comes to our restaurants. Full-service, more sit-down traditional restaurants, so we're down around 9%, which is a spike compared to what we were seeing. They were starting to get closer to breaking even. I think they were around 2% in August, so that number's increased a little bit. And then limited service eating places are actually performing much better than last year and almost up 6%. So you can kind of see the, the trends with where people are continuing to go out and shop or, or eat. I also include in the report a recap of the entire fiscal year. I also include in the report a recap of the entire fiscal year so you can get an idea of how we performed over the entire year, not just the COVID-related months. But overall, we saw four of the nine major industries with increases. Those were retail at 5.66%, wholesale 1.87%, miscellaneous at 43% and manufacturing up 3.9%. Compared to last year, we actually had seven out of the nine with increases. So we, we still are seeing some decreases in a number of our categories that we track. Retail, of course, continues probably to be the major driver of us seeing the 1.33% increase in overall collections compared to the same period last year. A lot of the same industries that we've talked about the last six months. Building materials has performed very well. Miscellaneous stores, food and beverage stores up 6.55%. That includes grocery stores, liquor stores, and some of those type industries. Sporting goods, in previous years, we discussed that was on the decline, but I think with COVID, a lot of people are looking for more outdoor activities or seeing that result in higher sales at sporting goods compared to previous years, with them being up 2%. Non-store retailers for the year was up 125%, starting to become a more impactful category compared to our other retail industries. They're, I think, sitting in the top four or five of sales tax collections now. Office supplies and pet supplies also are doing much better than they have in previous years. Some of the declines we've seen, general merchandise, clothing accessories, motor vehicle parts, furniture, electronics and appliances, all saw decreases on the, on the fiscal year. And then I just wanted to wrap up with a snapshot of our workforce. We continue to see lower unemployment numbers for the city limits. We had an August rate of 4.4% compared to 2.7% last year, but it's looking much better than back in April when we saw the 9.1% unemployment rate compared to the 2.1 in April 2019. So it's starting to, starting to improve our economy when it comes to unemployment. The MSA, larger five-county region, had an unemployment rate of 4.2%. That's compared to Texas at 7% and the US at 8.5%. Our biggest category that's still hurting quite a bit, of course, is leisure hospitality. Still overall for the year is down 35.4% compared to last year. And overall, 10 industries that we track, seven are still showing decreases. So there's definitely still room for growth in our current economy. I also wanted to mention, so we'll find out our numbers for sales tax tomorrow, for October's sales tax. We do know the state came in at 6.1% down overall. When we can go back to check on the COVID-related months, we typically perform a little bit better, a few points or more better than the state. So that could mean we could be anywhere from 3% down to breaking even. It's hard to tell, but just to give you an indicator that the state's down 6%. So we're hoping to, to do better than the state as far as October collections for August sales. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, do we have questions for Andrew?
What is an example of non-store retailers?
So that's, that is mainly your online sales. So that's the category you'd find Amazon or eBay, those kind of places that are shipping to your home.
Okay, thank you.
Yes sir, yes sir.
Other questions? Andrew, anything else?
No ma'am, thank you.
Jared?
That's it, that's all we have on the agenda unless there's any items that, well, it's not the only last item on the agenda, there is one more, I'll let you take care of that.
Oh, go ahead, Jared.
Well, is there any items or reports that counsel would like me to prepare for a future meeting? The absence of that is the last thing.
Okay, wonderful. With that then, we are adjourned and I appreciate everyone's attendance today as well as everything you prepped, we prepared to get ready for this meeting and we'll see you next Tuesday. Thank you, everybody.
You too.
Thank you.